Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to actually what is the second meeting of the Board of Commissioners in 2019. Earlier in the evening, we had a special call meeting and we introduced two new commissioners, Commissioner O'Quinn and Commissioner Neal, and they were sworn in and are at the dais with us, and welcome, gentlemen, to the team. We're delighted to have you. We're also delighted tonight to have all of you, and we would invite you at this time to stand for the invocation delivered by Commissioner Murphy, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Browning.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we come before you tonight humbled by and grateful for your many blessings, especially for sharing with us this particularly brilliant piece of your kingdom that we know as the Golden Isles. As we embark on a new year with a new Board of Commissioners, bless us with wisdom and discernment as we move forward with our county's business. And Holy Father, also bless and protect our dedicated and loyal county employees, especially our first responders, who daily put themselves at risk to keep us and our loved ones healthy and safe. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the blood for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any public comment tonight, and so I'm going to pass this gavel tonight, but I'm not going to do it quite yet. I have one more official act as chairman, and it will give me great pleasure to do this, and present a proclamation honoring the Frederica Academy football team. Commissioners, if you will, I'll never get to do this again, so indulge me for just a couple of minutes. I am vaguely familiar with this program, Frederica Football. I've missed one game in six years. We were out of the country. The question eight years ago, I guess, when the wheels started turning was, was Frederica Academy a large enough school to support a football program? You know, historically, over the last six years, the team has dressed out just a little over thirty players, and every Friday night, when they teed it up and you looked across the way there, they were outnumbered, sometimes two to one, once three to one, but always outnumbered. Actually, this team could have played in the 2A division, but they elected to go ahead and move up to the 3A division. I've observed these graduating seniors over the past three years and watched them and what they've done. Two years ago, they made it to the playoffs and came up just short. Same thing last year, made it to the playoffs, but just couldn't quite close the deal. But this was a year. This was a year that everybody was looking forward to, but it didn't start out exactly like we planned. We opened up with Frederica, I'm sorry, I shouldn't use the word "we." Frederica opened up with Charlton County, which is a public school, a perennial powerhouse in the state of Georgia. They showed up with eighty-seven players, one hundred and fifteen in the band and cheerleaders, fifteen coaches, and Frederica got beat in the last minute of the game by a touchdown. Lost two more games in overtime by a single point. It would have been easy for these kids to have just packed it in and said, you know, let's wait till next year, but that wasn't the character of this team. It just wasn't in their DNA. Something happened about the middle of the season, and the main thing that happened was they got healthy. And on November the thirtieth, 2018, they took the field at Mercy University to play for the state championship as a big underdog. Four quarters later, it was forty-eight to nothing. It was like nothing I'd ever seen before. Tuesday night, during the Sugar Bowl, when I screamed at my television set, I invoked the name of Frederica Academy several times, and I can assure you that I'm not delusional enough to assume that Frederica Academy could play with the University of Georgia even on their worst day. But the question was resoundly answered on November the thirtieth, 2018. Yes, Frederica can and does have a football program. So with that, let me do this proclamation that we're very honored as a commission to do. So Frederica Academy Knights, 2018 State Championship Celebration Day. Whereas the 2018 Frederica Academy Knights varsity football team has demonstrated great athleticism and determination in their season, and as a result, achieved tremendous success. And whereas this incredible team finished the regular season with a ten-three record, scoring a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-nine points while lying on only two-hundred-and-fourteen points to be scored by their opponents. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Brandon Derrick, coaches Alec Mathis, Trey Barnes, Mike Gibson, Josh Smith, Brad Thomas, Derrick Thomas, and athletic director Carl Nash, the team has won the second state football championship in just six years. Whereas on November thirtieth, 2018, the Frederica Academy Knights won the Class 3A Football State Championship game against John Millet's Academy Trojans in Macon, Georgia, with a resounding forty-eight to nothing victory. And whereas the 2018 Frederica Academy Knights football team won the 2018 State Championship with a victory that will go down as one of the greatest moments in Frederica Academy history. And whereas the 2018 Frederica Academy Knights, upper school cheerleaders have demonstrated great dedication by their continuous ability to spread school spirit. And whereas the Glenn County Board of Commissioners wishes to congratulate all those involved with this outstanding football team, players, coaches, cheerleaders, and parents, for a winning season and for winning the state championship. And whereas the team has brought great honor, not only to themselves, but also to their school, their family, and to the Glenn County community as well. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glenn County Board of Commissioners that it hereby recognizes the young men on the 2018 Frederica Academy Knights football team for demonstrating tremendous athletic talent, and also the Knights' coaches for their dedication to the fine individuals they've coached over the years. And proclaim today, January the third, 2019, as Frederica Academy Knights Football Championship Celebration Day in Glenn County. In witness thereof, I send my hand this third day of January, 2019, Bill Brunson, Chairman of the Glenn County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to ask the team, the cheerleaders, the coaches, Dewey Benefield and Ellen Fleming. Ellen, can you make it up here? You got some help back there for some big, strong boys. If they would come forward and we'll present this proclamation to you. Thanks, Coach. Thank you. Hey, whatever. The next item is election of chairman and vice chairman. At this time, I'll open the floor up for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I offer Commissioner Mike Browning for chairman.
Have Mike Browning being nominated for chairman, any other nominations? Move the nominations be closed?
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I move that nominations be closed.
A second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, all those in favor of nominations being closed, raise your right hand. All those in favor of Commissioner Browning being the new chairman, raise your right hand. Congratulations. I guess that deserves a round of applause. Commissioner? Commissioner? The only requirement here is you have to warn Commissioner Murphy before you hammer it. Be in surgery or something. There you go, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunson. We will follow through now with the next part of the election of chairman and vice chairman, which is the election of vice chairman, and open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Bill Brunson as vice chair.
Okay. We get a second?
We don't need a second.
Oh, we don't need a second on that? Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll close the floor to nominations. Do I need a motion to close the floor to nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. All those in favor of the nomination of Bill Brunson as vice chair, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. You didn't vote?
No.
Well, it was six-one, for the record. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We have just concluded the nominations for chairman and vice chair of the commission. And before we move on with the rest of the agenda, I want to take just another quick moment to welcome our new commissioners and ask them to talk to us. You know, we're all here to take your calls. If you hear something in a meeting and you forget to ask a question and you want to know a little bit about it, we'll try to tell you what we heard, what we think's going on, but, you know, just stay engaged with us and stay engaged with staff, and listen to the community and see what the community wants. And that's what your job is all about, and I look forward to serving with each of you. And even though he's not a new commissioner, he is returning for his second term, and I want to welcome back Commissioner Bill Brunson. And I want to take this opportunity to thank him for his last two years as chair of this commission. Bill has done an outstanding job through some very trying times for the county. We had two major storms. It was a very trying time for the community, some more so than others, but it took a lot of his time and effort to stay on top of that, and some of the major issues that mandated by the state for us to deal with, and then some of them that are locally borne. And I think Bill has done a tremendous job of representing the commission and representing his community here at home and out of town. When we're out of town, representing Glenn County, he has done a most professional job at that, and I want to say thank you, and I think I can say thank you on behalf of the board. Bill, thank you. Be a tough act to follow. Gentlemen, if you will, we're going to move on to the appointments, and the only appointments we're going to do tonight is for the finance committee. We're not going to do the rest of them. I need to talk to the commissioners. Now that we have the two new ones seated, I need to talk to the commissioners and be sure, you know, we're getting people where they want to be and where they need to be on these other committees, but the one that we will appoint tonight, and I want to ask for ratification from the board, is the finance committee, because they'll have to meet before our next meeting in January, when we will decide the rest of them. But on the finance committee, I'd like to put Commissioner Booker as chair, Commissioner Murphy, and Commissioner O'Quinn. So if I can get a motion and a second to ratify, I'd appreciate it.
I make a motion to ratify. Commissioner Booker as the chairman, Murphy and O'Quinn on finance committee.
We have a motion, have a second, any discussion? Being no discussion, call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is, and those opposed, raise your same. All right, that is six-four and one against. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, this time I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for general business and the consent agenda for the finance committee, other than any item that... that a commissioner wishes to move to discuss.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, gentlemen? There be no discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, I say, that is six-four and one against. Thank you. Have no general business tonight. Counsel, we have anything for... Okay. Let me say, before we adjourn on these committees, I'm going to take a look as we get into the new year, and there may be some changes, even what we announced tonight, there may be some changes. I want to be darn sure that we get the right people in the right places, so... But tonight, this is where we're going with the finance committee. And that being said, I have a motion to adjourn.
The chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor adjourning, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you all.